In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. O God, whose Son Jesus Christ cared for the welfare of everyone, and went about doing good through your grace, grant us the imagination and perseverance to create in this county a just society. Make us agents of your compassion to the suffering and deprived, persecuted and oppressed through your Son Jesus Christ, who is our pattern and our redeemer. Amen. O God, Creator and Ruler of all, we ask your blessing on the members of this County Council who have been called to show care and responsibility in the community. We pray that we may have wisdom, patience, and the ability to listen to each other and to the needs and desires of those they represent, that through their dedication and hard work, this county may duly prosper and the life of all people enhanced. We ask this in Jesus' name. Invite you to join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, your Art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, wherever and ever. Amen. Good morning again. Item one, apologies. Are there any apologies from absence?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologies received from councillors Afzal, De Vil, Perd, Price, Wilcox, Hussein, and Waring.
Okay, moving on. Item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare any interest? councillor Francis.
Who declare that item nine about asylum seekers is in my division, county division.
Thank you councillor Francis. Item three, confirmation for the minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 18th of May 2023 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Three items of correspondence. Firstly, I'm sure that members will wish to join me in welcoming Pat Lahati, our new chief executive, to his first meeting of the council. Welcome, Pat. As members may be aware, Pat was born and raised in Staffordshire and has served as the chief executive at the Lunnabur of Harrow and also as chief executive of Somerset County Council. Pat has worked in local government for 30 years, including 16 years at councils in Staffordshire. I'm delighted to welcome Pat and having him sit on my right, a warm welcome, Pat. Thank you. The second item on the chairman's correspondence is the Staffordshire residents recognizing in His Majesty the King's Birthday Honors. I think this is fabulous. Whenever I read them, I'm also delighted that so many people get on us from our wonderful county of Staffordshire. And I'm sure that members will wish to join me in congratulating the following members, the following Staffordshire residents who have received honors in His Majesty the King's Birthday Honors list. Mike Cherry from Burton-on-Trent, Lady Chair of the Federation of Small Businesses, Commander of the Order of British Empire for Services to Business and International Trade. And a warm congratulations to Linda Cobb, also from Burton-on-Trent, Principal Manager, Decent and Safe Arms Derby City Council, Officer of the Order of the British Empire for Services to Housing. And from where we are now, a warm congratulations to Susie Hugiton from Stafford, Chief Executive, Little Hearts Matter, Member of the Order of the British Empire for Services to Children, Adults, and Their Families with Heart Defects. And from my hometown, Lorna Millington from Cannock, Future Networks Manager, Caden Gass, MBE for Services to Business and the Environment. And from Lichfield, Terry Tricker, MBE for Services to Communities in Staffordshire. Claire Bond, Medalist of the Order of the British Empire for Services to Women Policing and Communities in Staffordshire. And Dr Naomi Forrester-Soto from Newcastle, Reader in Vector Biology at Kiel University, BEM for Services to Public Communication, particularly during COVID-19. Kim Smith, also from Burton-on-Trent, BEM for Services to the Community in Winsill, particularly during COVID-19. And last but certainly not least, my warmest congratulations go to George Roy from Stafford, President of the Stafford branch of the Royal British Legion, BEM for Voluntary Services to Veterans in Staffordshire. I'm sure members will join me in congratulating all of those wonderful people in Staffordshire to receiving that award. It must be absolutely delightful for them. Mrs. Snape, do you want to speak on that item?
No, I'm in the process.
Okay, thank you. I also announced the fundraising for my chosen charity. I wanted to choose a charity that was particularly Staffordshire-based, and that was really important to me, that it was a charity that I could have an affection for and something that served our community of Staffordshire as a whole. And I've chosen the Catherine Allport Foundation. Catherine Allport sadly died at 32 years old of a rare form of breast cancer. And her husband and her mother started a foundation. And what they simply do, they send care parcels to people who have recently diagnosed with cancer in Staffordshire. And for those of us that have been touched by cancer, and I would say, looking around the chamber, that's pretty well all of us, it's a very difficult time. And these two people do this amazing thing of producing these hampers, and it's full of all the stuff, and often bespoke, all the stuff that's useful. They're about £140 each. Last year, they sent 440 out, some of them to children. They will go the extra mile, such as a football team use support to get some sign memorabilia and creams for ladies and some nice chocolates. All the stuff that would make you feel even a little bit better during what is a very difficult time. Mike Bradby and I met the Catherine Allport Foundation. They are a registered charity. They take no expenses. They take no salaries. In fact, they take time off work to fulfill what is a mission for them. They've agreed to come to every one of our functions that will raise money for them. And I ask members, wherever possible, to support this worthwhile, local and small charity. Thank you. And now I'm going to call in councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I thank you first for allowing me to speak during the chairman's correspondence? Can I first of all say thank you for the excellent civic service you had on Sunday, where we actually had the widower of Catherine from your charity there. It was a great day and a great date for the county, your civic service. But what I'd really like to say is thank you to everybody for my time as chairman. During that time, my charity, thanks to a lot of help from people in this chamber, raised a sum of £6,953.33. Whoever gave the £33, thank you very much. It's going to be donated to my two charities. The first is £5,000 to the Soldiers Charity, the Army Benevolent Fund. And the second, the remainder, £1,953.33 to the Staffordshire Wildlife Fund. I chose the one, the army, and my wife chose the other, the Staffordshire Wildlife, the children's sector. So once again, can I thank everybody here and people who may be listening in other parts of the county who support us throughout our time for everything they gave towards our charity and support they gave to myself and Susan? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you councillor Snape. What a marvelous achievement to raise that amount of money for such worthy causes. You've set me quite a target, councillor Snape. Moving on, item five, a statement to the leader of the council. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of the statement, please?
Good morning, Chairman. I hope you're well. I move consideration of the leader's statement.
Thank you. Item one, Staffordshire Means Back to Business, which was an oral update. Councillor Sean Atkins.
Yes, I just wanted to ask how the county councils' new employment and skills strategy will support business and enterprise in towns like Leake, where small business predominates rather than large operations. Thank you.
Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I firstly take the opportunity of commending the report, but commenting really that I don't think it goes anywhere near far enough to look at the massive opportunities that we have in this progressive county? I took the trouble to sit down for half an hour, and I identified 14 areas of job opportunities that are massive, with major retraining opportunities and tremendous things that can happen that all relate to the green agenda. We seem to be looking at so many progressive things within the county, but not really quite bringing the green agenda to the forefront in the way that I feel that we should do. If we look at things like quaddy restoration, which the planning committee is very much involved in, it's looking at massive change which is coming about there. That is offering job opportunities and tremendous ways forward. We look at agriculture and the changes coming about in agriculture that again provide opportunities. Looking at water management, that's got to be a whole new rethink of the way that we do things. Tremendous opportunities. When we go on from there, planning and our dependence on gas as a means of heating, we need to take a much more progressive view as far as how this county can become self-sustainable. Should we be looking at the Rolls-Royce nuclear mini-power stations? All the opportunities that we have as members to be able to get together and look at how we can make this county even more progressive than it is? We need to look at a revolution in house building. Just sticking one brick on top of another, the way that we have for 1,000 years, is not an acceptable way for us to go forward. We need to rethink what we need to do, and that provides opportunities for factories to be built in this county that will be providing support for our housing industry. We also need to look at highway management. We've got new ways of looking at things. We've got new alternatives to tarmac, where there's opportunities to bring companies into this county instead of being in Scotland or North Wales, where we will have opportunities to convert plastic into road repair materials. We also need to be looking so much more at the way that we are currently undertaking activities. We had a visit recently to go and have a look at the Four Ashes Waste Centre. That is fantastic, but we don't talk about it. We don't say what a fantastic job as a county we're doing. And so I think that we need to be more progressive. We need to look at the BIFRA waste site and how that's recycling food waste. So many things that we've got. And then to crown it all, in the not-too-distant future, we're going to be looking at a totally new system for disposing of carbon waste, where we have concrete manufacture, which is one of the worst polluters that we have. How are we going to be able to dispose of that carbon waste? That will be coming to the planning committee, and it provides job opportunities. Chairman, I think that we're doing a good job, but we need to be doing something very much more creative, imaginative, and looking at the way forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I certainly welcome the content of this report. What I would request is that the leader fully engages with the Staffordshire Leaders Board, especially with the recent change of administrations, to make sure that the policies of Staffordshire County Council and the forward push of Staffordshire County Council to drive business and growth and investment is actually cognizant with the local plan documents which the districts and boroughs have. And certainly, my district of Staffordshire Mall, there are a couple of instances within the local plan documents where certainly Staffordshire County Council could certainly assist in making sure that those sites are unlocked and subsequently delivered. Thank you.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So just addressing the points that colleagues have made. So councillor Atkins, the employment and skills strategy is still at consultation, so there is the opportunity to make the points that you've made today and others as part of that consultation. But the intention is that that strategy meets the needs of our businesses and of people in Staffordshire who are interested in availing themselves of the opportunities that the strategy speaks to. Most of our businesses, the overwhelming majority, are small and medium-sized enterprises. So necessarily, it needs to address the needs of those businesses as well as larger employers. But there's still some road to run in terms of developing that. So I'd be very pleased indeed if you develop those themes within the consultation. Regarding the green agenda, it is, as my colleague councillor Tag likes to say, it is the green thread that runs through everything that we do within the council. These oral updates that I give to Cabinet tend to be firstly relatively brief, because Cabinet requires brevity, but also they tend to be thematic. So this one focuses on employment and skills, for example. But I'll be delighted to deliver one of these updates with a theme on that agenda, so that it can be debated subsequently here when the leader's statement comes as part of the council agenda. So that will give a good opportunity to do that, I hope. And regarding the leaders board and that interface between the activities of district and borough councils and the county council, I know that's one of the reasons why the leaders board exists, but it's above my pay scale to comment on it in detail. So I'll leave it for the leader to address that, should he choose to. More broadly, the overall point of this update and the theme was around the work that we do supporting our businesses and supporting people in Staffordshire in terms of their opportunities to work. We know that work is probably the best indicator in terms of having a good life. If you've got a job, you're probably on the right track. We're very fortunate in Staffordshire that we have one of the lowest unemployment rates in the region, much, much lower than the West Midlands average, but also much lower than the national average. And that is a consistent trend over many years. It's not a short-term thing. The purpose behind all of the work that you see outlined here, and particularly new initiatives, such as our Staffordshire Careers and Jobs Service, is that we are always looking to support the activities of the private sector and fill any gaps, perhaps from national provision locally, where we think there's something appropriate to do. The Jobs and Careers Service is a great example of that. And we're always looking for those gaps that we can fill usefully here to improve people's lives and help businesses do what they do. Thank you very much.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to address councillor Atkins' point directly about the nature of the businesses in Leake and the requirement for skills to fulfill those roles of the smaller nature of businesses. In due course, the Skills Hub will be coming back to Staffordshire County Council from the Local Enterprise Partnership. So that will allow the portfolio holder to dovetail the skills requirements across the county for those jobs that we have vacancies for and needs for skills improvement. More generally, we would like to see the government devolving skills funding completely to local areas, because actually, how can you know from a desk in Whitehall what the requirements are for somebody who's working in, say, Leake or Cannock or wherever it might be in the county of Staffordshire? Which I suppose segues quite neatly into councillor Smith's point, which is if we have priorities of the nature that he's described in his statement, then we'll be able to skill our people within this county appropriately to deal with those opportunities. And I think that devolution piece is something we want to continue to work with. As far as the leaders board is concerned, working together as a group of councils across Staffordshire is surely the best way to secure our future with government, make sure that they know that we are together, we're working in a united fashion. Since the elections in May, I've reached out and met with every single one of the new leaders across Staffordshire. And I'm delighted to say that Mike Ledhill, the leader of Moorlands Council, is a Manchester City fan. So it doesn't matter what our party political allegiances are. We have common ground when it comes to footy. So he and I have discussed the priorities for Leake and the Moorlands in general. And it's fair to say that we're interested in making the world a better place for all our residents, no matter which political party we come from. That's the beauty of local government, isn't it? It doesn't really matter. You just want to make the place you live in better. And Mike Ledhill and myself are united in that cause. As far as, going back to councillor Smith's comments regarding the opportunities he's identified across the county on the green agenda. Councillor Tag is doing a wonderful job identifying those opportunities that we have. And I would suggest that actually perhaps councillor Tag and councillor Smith meet to discuss that in some detail. I know that he'll be interested to hear what those ideas are, as I say, in more detail. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I conclude.
Thank you councillor White. I've been going around the county just the same, meeting mayors and chairs. I haven't found anybody else yet that supports West Bromwich Albion. So you have one advantage over me there, leader. Moving on to item two on the leader's statement, which is household waste recycling centres, the consultation and feedback policy changes, reuse, and eight WRC network improvements to date. Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much for including this in the leader's report. Certainly welcome anything back, anything which brings services closer to our residents and closer to our direct control. What I would like to raise, though, is that on the 18th of June 2023, the Environment Minister announced council DIY waste charges abolished. And I understand that those charges are still being, with immediate effect, and those charges are still being levied on private cars, private vehicles going into the recycling centres. What the Environment Minister Rebecca Powell actually said is we want to make it as easy as possible for people to dispose of their waste properly, and that's why we are removing the financial burden on doing the right thing with DIY trash. This not only supports our wider work to tackle fly tipping and waste crime, but we are helping home improvers across the nation to make their dream projects a reality. Now, as far as I'm concerned, DIY is quite a broad spectrum. And for some people, it's very little. For some people, it's obviously quite a lot. But one of the larger DIY retail chains, B and Q, call their website, DIY.com. So I would suggest when we're reviewing what charges to impose, if anything which appears for sale on DIY.com is not included within the charges which are put forward at the waste and recycling centres. And I think if we agree that that is a common standpoint, that if it's for sale at that particular retail store, then it should be able to be tipped properly and efficiently and freely under the guise of the council tax payments which our residents currently pay, then I think that would be absolutely fine. I do think that there are other ways of maximizing recycling and looking at, and I know that with the Canock, the larger Canock recycling centres, you've got a permit system. And I would like to see that permit system extended out now that we're in control, so that we can take limited business waste, especially from small businesses, because that ensures that A, we're creating a revenue stream, and B, we are optimizing the opportunity to recycle. Because I do know that a lot of small businesses tend to tip at places who've got landfill license sites, and it doesn't necessarily optimize the recycling rate. So I do think if, you know, removing the DIY waste charges could be offset by some clever and strategic thinking on how we manage the sites for a broader recycling and reusing policy. And that's something which I would really like this council to fully engage in. And as always, I'm quite open to that discussion. I'm quite open to thinking that it's something which we could take forward collectively at the Staffordshire Sustainability Board, and perhaps even in a future day to the Climate Change Working Group. Because recycle, reuse, repurpose has got to be the mantra. And the mantra has got to also be cognizant with that, is the removal of barriers to ensure that all those things can happen seamlessly and properly and in the most efficient manner. Thank you.
Councillor Samantha Thompson.
Thank you. I'd like to say I'm pleased to see this coming. And also the fact that the local parish council has been working with the officers from Staffordshire County Council and that they have been listening to them. It's good to know that Staffordshire County Council's asked our advice. That's my local parish council, that we've worked hard, because our handyman does a lot of work for highways, as in cutting back hedges and trimming stuff. And we've worked with the officers to have this permit for our handyman, sorry. It's also helped that we're allowing local employers to come in and use that for the waste facility rather than outside bodies, as in Birmingham. We were having a lot of Birmingham people come in to drop their waste, and then the Cannock people were having to queue, and then we've been told that they couldn't put their waste there because it was awful. So it's really good now that we're allowed to have the local people come in first rather than the Birmingham people come in. So I'd just like to express my thanks for that, because we feel we've been listened to in our area, and we do appreciate it. That's on behalf of myself and the local residents.
Thank you. Councillor Sam Attack.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, everybody. And thank you for those comments, Sam. I think that you're quite right in the use by members of the community. People are doing good work for the community, particularly through parish councils, should be able to, you know, dispose of that waste on our waste recycling sites. And thank you for raising that. You were the one that raised that through the scrutiny process, and that's been included as we go forward on those sites. So thank you. Responding to councillor Yates, thank you again for that comment and also for that offer to work together, which we will accept on taking this policy forward, whether that's through our scrutiny working group or whether that's through SSB with our district and borough colleagues. I think on the point that you've raised, we are awaiting the formal government legislation changes on that change charging. Often, as we see in a lot of areas, the government do those headline announcements, and it takes a while for everything to catch up. Now, for us here, the agenda item on number two there is those changes we're already making to our policies around the household waste recycling sites. And I can confirm that we will be taking away the charges for those items which councillor Yates has highlighted, and the government are changing the formal legislation around. Will be included in our package that we move forward with the permits later in the summer, early autumn. So we confirm that will be happening. Okay, thank you.
I have no further speakers on that item. Moving on to item three, which is the Household Support Fund. I'll go straight to the cabinet member, Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, everyone. For two and a half years now, Staffordshire County Council has distributed finance to Household Support Fund. In total, we have distributed £27.5 million, mainly to households in most need of support through food, energy, and the cost of utility, or the utility bills. This financial year, the fund is £11 million, just over £11 million. And that will be distributed with support for children entitled to free school meals. That's £3.7 million. Care leavers, £100 and £11. care leavers, £160,000; professional referral route, £2.4 million to families in need. The professional referral route is always a difficult one to do because we rely on professionals, and including professionals, everyone in this chamber who can go through the process and refer families and people they think might be in need. It's a very simple process, it's not arduous, it's just a few lines on an email response, and then the team will look at that. So if you have families that you feel might be in need, then I would urge you and other colleagues to do just that. £1.7 million to winter warmth, and because this is the last year that we will be able to allocate a Household Support Fund, we've allocated almost £2 million towards an education section of it, and that's to help with budgeting face-to-face support, tools and resource programme, and small grants to community organisations that can assist people and families. And through the family hubs in particular, we will have our supporting families, employment advisers and family coaches, and we'll be taking on an extra two family coaches for 12 months to be able to facilitate that. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I have no further speakers on that item. Moving on to item four on the Leader's Statement, which is volunteering for Staffordshire County Council. Councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I very much welcome these principles because I think it's absolutely vital that we recognise the contribution that volunteers make, and very often they're too often just taken for granted. So I hope other councils will be adopting these, and I'm very much hoping that Staffordshire Moorlands District Council will adopt these, because everyone knows that volunteering doesn't work unless it's mutually beneficial to both the volunteer and to the volunteering organisation. And, I mean, I volunteered for many different bodies, including the Canal River Trust that is facing funding cuts in the future, and they rely very heavily on volunteers, whether it be volunteer lockkeepers, whether it be people looking after the vegetation alongside the canal and so on, and really couldn't operate without those volunteers. So I think it's absolutely vital that they are recognised and valued. And, you know, I know, for instance, with the Canal River Trust, I've got my volunteering mug, which I use because I've done so many, however many, hundreds of hours. But I do think it is important because volunteering can provide such fantastic skills for individuals and can build confidence, but they won't start coming back, they won't continue coming back unless there's something in it for them. So I really do hope that we boost our volunteering numbers and to have a diversity of volunteers, and that's really important as well. It's not just for a particular age range, it's right across the board, and it can be really, really valuable. So I recognise and, you know, certainly welcome these principles, but I hope that they're taken up on a more wide basis as well.
Councillor Caroline Trowbridge.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chairman. I also absolutely welcome these principles, but I also wanted to state that I myself, like many councillors here, are a huge volunteer. I was on the PTA of many schools, I'm a governor, as most of you are. I volunteered for Girl Guides my whole life, I'm now president of Girl Guides. I volunteer at the local park, I set up a community group that teaches children how to grow plants. I went into every school in Stafford for many, many years, teaching them how to debate, taking them to Parliament. Every single little bit of my volunteering, which that is just a small piece of, I do for free. It costs me, in fact, nearly everything I do costs me. But most papers, most people who recognise us in the community recognise us for this chamber and the work that we do. They don't recognise us for the extra work that we do. We are all volunteers. Some of us do a lot, some of us do a little. So I would actually ask Mrs Wilson to recognise that councillors are also volunteers and that we also need recognition when we're doing things that are outside of the chamber, that is us as people as volunteers. Thank you, and thank you to everyone who does volunteer.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and yes, I'd like to echo the comments which have been made. These nine principles are absolutely excellent, there was quite a lengthy scrutiny at corporate review, and I think there was a good two-way conversation, it was very well received. I would like to see, and just echoing what councillor Atkins has said, I would like to see if we can get this adopted through the boroughs and through the districts and perhaps even down through the towns and parishes, because one of the things which is hammered home all the time is all about efficiencies and efficiency savings, and one thing which makes councillors' lives and officers' lives collectively across the three levels of council more efficient and more easy to operate is if we're all operating on a common standard. And I think the quality of this document is good enough to be that common standard for volunteering across the board. If it can suggest one slight amendment and tweak, and it's not a criticism of what's there, is that the emphasis is on regular volunteers and all of us in our communities, whether it be coming up to, say, Christmas light switch on or a summer festival, whatever, or a little bit of fettling on the green spaces and things, is that we also have an addendum which includes ad hoc volunteers, which allows us to quite easily and quickly, without going through reams and reams of qualification paperwork and things, allows us to sign up people at almost a moment's notice, a call to arms, so to speak, can we go and do something? Which means that we're collectively covered by an overriding principle, we're collectively covered by public liability insurance and all those curveballs which are thrown at us to actually act as barriers to do things in the community. And a perfect example of that is looking at the Green Agenda. A lot of town and parish councils, and to a lesser extent, district and borough councils are leaning on the Woodall and Trust to supply huge quantities of free trees, and when those trees arrive, you never quite know what date they arrive, you're given a few days' notice because it's within the planting period, and then we do a call to volunteers. You never quite know whether they're going to be brand-new volunteers or the usual suspects, but we need to incorporate those into something very quickly, very efficiently and very straightforwardly, without putting the onus on the offices and councils who organise that and potentially put a stop to it. So again, and that's one of the reasons for putting that appeal out, so we can actually have it as not just comprehensive, which has got the efficiency, but it's got the coverall for the ad hoc volunteers. They might only volunteer once, and then you want to encourage them to go back. So obstacle removing, more than a fantastic start, it's a fantastic document, fully supported. So let's develop it and work on it. Thank you very much.
Councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Chairman, an excellent document, but can I take this stage further, please? We all say thank you to our volunteers, and if you look at the money they save us across the county, but that's not just individual volunteers, we have whole communities that occasionally volunteer, where they take on a role to do in a community. And there's an award which myself and there's two past chairs here as well, will have been to evenings where the Queen's Award for Voluntary Service has been presented to a whole community. It's the equivalent of an MBE for a community, but very rarely across Staffordshire are they being awarded, because we as councillors aren't putting people into them. It's an easy process, you speak to the Lord Lieutenant's Office, to Sean or to Gemma, or to the High Sheriff's Office, and they will put them in for it. Research is done into what the community's done, but then they can wear that badge for the rest of their life. It's not like the Business Award, which is for three years, this stays with the community for life. So I'll just remind the members here, please, there is the Queen's Award for Voluntary Service, it's a way of saying thank you to the whole community for what they do. Well, sorry, it is still called the Queen's Award, but I suppose now it will be renamed as the King's Award, so I apologise, King Charles, but in the future, I suppose it will be the King's Award, but it's the same award, it's for voluntary service in our communities, it's a quintessence MBE, and they can wear that badge for life. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Snape. Yes, definitely the King's Award. Councillor Keith Flunder.
Thank you. I just... Thank you, leader, very much appreciated. Am I on now, testing, testing, one, two?
Yes, councillor Flunder, please continue.
Thank you. So, as I say, I'm fully supportive of volunteering, everything else, I just wanted to put a slightly different angle on what I've been witnessing recently. I went to a funding event recently at Bidov Town Hall, and I went there just to really talk to a couple of people who I thought were interested in looking at my councillors' grant applications and everything else. Anyway, three and a half hours later, after talking to about 16 or 17 different organisations, it became very clear to me that we've still got a lot of work to do, and there's lots of people out there who are very interested in continuing their work and to be able to expand the voluntary sector. So it's not at all negative in terms of that, I'm just trying to be, the fact that we need to get these organisations, the new groups setting up at the moment all over the county, we need them registered so that they can then start looking at funding and applying for funds elsewhere, and I just hope that Support Staffordshire will continue to support me and the rest of the councillors in being able to get all those groups who are really interested in supporting their local communities, to get them up and running and to have the supportive role that Support Staffordshire and SCIVs both have, both from a youth sports perspective and from a community perspective. And I fully, you know, respect and support what we're trying to do in this particular area. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Flunder. One final speaker on this item, councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I fully welcome these principles. I think we all recognise the work that volunteers do, but I think we also have to recognise the volunteers for the authority, and because it is obviously setting the example of how we proceed. Volunteers are the hub of our communities, full stop, in my opinion. Without volunteers, our communities would be bereft. So it's very much important that we make everything possible, that is making it something that people don't see as onerous but absolutely rewarding. And most people do. It is very much volunteering is about health and wellbeing. People see it as important to do something, not just for the community but also for themselves. It's extremely important in this day and age of the hustle and the bustle and everything else, that people can reflect and be able to do something that is also their wellbeing in a view of contribution to communities. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Victoria Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. In this county, we have 4,600 volunteer hours working within our Archives and Heritage Team. We have 9,944 hours of time that's been given by volunteers to help on our countryside estate. We have 500 regular volunteers within all areas of the work that we do as a council and countless others. We have 187 parish councils in this county, and they are all volunteers, and none of those should be forgotten. And we never take a single one of those volunteers for granted, I have to say that. We work closely with the Staffordshire Parish Council's Association as well, making sure that we maximise the work that we can do collaboratively with these parish and town councils and with other community groups as well. We absolutely recognise the element of volunteering that helps not just with communities, as councillor Cox has said, but also with feeling yourself that you're contributing to society, feeling that your mental health is improved because you're able to help your community. You'll see later in the Community Fund Report a number of different organisations that have contributed and done a lot of great work around the county with the use of our Community Fund. But this volunteering review is really timely because we really do want to support our volunteers, and we want them to feel that they're supported and feel that they're protected, and these principles go a long way to help with that. We do want to recognise the work that they do. Working with our VCSE partners, of course, SCIVs and Support Staffordshire, we're really, really proud of this movement. And I think the green thread was mentioned earlier, this is the gold thread, the golden thread that runs through everything we do in this county, through our volunteers and through our communities. And I'd really like to thank absolutely every community group and every volunteer in this county, whether it's from the Moorlands, Bidov, all the way down to Kinver, I'd like to thank everybody for everything that they do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Chairman. I think the first thing I want to do is come in behind councillor Trowbridge's very helpful comments about the work that councillors do. All across this chamber, every face I look at, I can think of what they do behind the scenes. So councillor Francis over there, chair of Governors of a Special School, councillor Hudson, blood bike, riding blood transfusion services around, everybody, everybody here makes an additional contribution to their communities, and this is, I suppose, the pinnacle of what you achieve, which is not just helping your communities in a voluntary fashion, but directing the taxpayers' spend in ways that support your communities. So well done you, it's a great contribution that you make. But across Staffordshire, the volunteering is deep, it is unrecognised in many cases, and I remember from my time as the Health and Care Portfolio Holder, just reflecting on how many voluntary hours are put in to avoid costs in social services. Let's think about the grandparents who look after children after school so parents can stay at work earning money to look after their families. That goes completely unrecognised, but we know it happens because we've done an audit of it and we recognise the value of that. Think about middle-aged people who are looking after elderly parents who might have dementia or can't look after themselves anymore, and you're there, my wife is round at her parents' house every single night, making sure that they're okay, making sure that they've got a hot meal and everything that they require to support them in their own home. So there's a lot that goes on around this place, not just within this chamber, but also from our residents, and I'm hugely grateful for everything that everybody does. But councillor Flunder makes a really, really good point. For those people who are starting up a new voluntary organisation, they do need that help to know where to get started, how to get the bank account sorted out, where to apply for funds, and I know that councillor Wilson works with SCIVs and others to make sure that they have the support that they need to get off to a flying start. So thank you for everything that's being done on this. As I say, hugely grateful for the residents and the councillors in Staffordshire for everything that they do.
Moving on to item five on the Leader's Statement, which is the Joint Coroner's Service Legal Framework and Financial Protocol. Councillor Julian Pardaisi.
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask, Chair, how this new arrangement will help in clearing the backlog of affecting the Staffordshire Coroner's Service? Last week, we read in our local paper that loved ones are lying in mortuary fridges for up to five weeks, and access to them is being denied by their families during that time. Thank you, Chair.
I have no further speakers. Lee, do you want to come in on that one?
Fine, thank you very much indeed for raising that, councillor Pardaisi. We will look into that and see what can be done to expedite that process. We know there's been a backlog for some time, and we will work with the coroner's office to ascertain what the cause of that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving swiftly on to item six, which is on the Leader's Statement, which is Community Learning, Ofsted Inspection and Accountability Agreement in the years 2023 to 2024. I have no speakers on this, so I'm going straight to the Cabinet Member, Philip White.
So I'll just rise quickly just to say a huge well done to Amanda Darlington and her team who lead this service. Ofsted only provide a simple rating of outstanding good, et cetera, but this was an absolutely glowing good. If you read the report, it really leaps off the page how excellently this service is delivered. And it's delivered to thousands of Staffordshire residents. There's a very wide range of courses that are available, but the main focus, the driving theme across them all is it's about engagement, it's about getting people who may be isolated, maybe... It's about getting people who may be isolated, maybe may not be participating in the workforce at the moment, would like to build their confidence so they can get back to work, people who want to do more in their lives in one way or another. And this service works brilliantly to help those people to do whatever it is they want to do through community learning. So a big well done to them. It's a real asset to this council and something we can be rightly proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving swiftly on to item seven on the Leader's Statement, which is Integrated Performance, Integrated Performance Performance and Finance Final Outturn Report, 2023, 2022, apologies to 2023. I have no speakers. Leader, do you want to come in on that? Is that yes or no, Mr Perry? Thank you. Moving on. Item eight, the Framework Agreement for Maintenance in Minor Works. Yes. Councillor Sheldon Atkins.
Yes, I would just want to know what scope there is within the framework for local procurement. I see that the contracts are no more than £2 million. But obviously, it's even more important now, given the cost of living crisis and the economy and inflation, that contracts are awarded to local businesses so that the spending power of the county council can benefit local economies.
Leader, I have no further speakers. Do you want to come in?
Yes, please. And I know that councillor Deville will be hugely disappointed because when this comes up in Cabinet, there's generally a little bit of ribbing about these items coming to Cabinet. But they are very, very important because of the amount of money that's being spent and also the impact on the local economy. So I've just had, in the absence of councillor Deville, had a minor conflag with our senior leadership team here. And I am assured that the priority is sourcing contracts from local providers as and where appropriate, so that we are supporting the local economy in the way that councillor Atkins has described.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine on the Leader's Statement, which is the Centre for Asylum Seekers in Stafford. Councillor Bob Spencer, oh, excuse me, councillor Victoria Wilson.
Thank you, chairman. I am proud to live and work in this welcoming county. People here, we're talking about people here who have fled persecution and made their way here by whatever means they could or have. This is a beautiful county. Let's share our riches with others in the hope that in time they'll be able to return to their homes and their communities and find them improved, or at least on the way to seeing improvement. While it's not our place to ask why or how, these people have found themselves here. And should we ever find ourselves needing to flee our familiar surroundings, let's hope that if we ever did arrive into a strange foreign country with very different ways of living, we would be seen by local people there to be offering a safe haven from where they can start to rebuild their lives until one day we could go back to this county that we call home. So I'm very grateful that we're doing this and I think that we should be welcoming everybody that we can into this county as we always do, chairman.
Councillor Julian Pardaisi.
Thank you, Chair. My question is a two-part question, Chair. If I could firstly ask, please, where the evidence is that the asylum seekers are likely to be young, single adults? If I could have the answer to that question first, please.
I'll call the Leader in appropriately. If you can finish your statement, councillor Pardaisi. This is not a question of an answered session. You make the statement and the Leader will come in and he'll answer as appropriate. Thank you, councillor Pardaisi.
Chair, my concern is that if we do not have our facts right, then we should not be printing statements like this. It is perpetuating an unhelpful narrative which is being used to scaremonger our communities when the reality is the asylum seekers will be a mixture of young men, single women and families with children. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bob Spencer.
Chair, thank you for that, really just in support of the last two comments. As most will know, I previously was a senior police officer and understand the difficulties in managing some of these serious community issues. And I'm reminded of an oath that I, and I look around the room and I can see several other ex-police officers took. And that was about how we as a collective protect the individual from the crowd and, of course, the crowd from the individual. I think this is a highly sensitive and emotive topic. It's had a lot of press coverage. I suppose the issue that I would like to get across to members really is just to remind everyone of their responsibilities around how we as elected members have that responsibility to make sure that our communities are both cohesive and safe. And unfortunately, like all local authorities, we do have elements of the extreme far-right here. And also, they will naturally be looking for some justification for what they do. I do think, however, that what we as elected members perhaps need to remind ourselves of is the fact that we also have processes here. And actually, this is about trust and confidence of our local communities, to protect them and to make sure that whatever happens, we keep them safe. And here in Staffordshire, I think, you know, that is a characteristic of the Staffordshire towns and villages. And that partnership that has worked really well over time, I think we need to ensure that that will continue unheeded. They need reassurance. Also, I believe that members need reassurance around how we manage these threats and potential risks. As the Chair of Safeguarding, I'm also the Chair of the Crime and Disorder Panel. And if I could just reassure members that once the details are known, and bear in mind, we know very little of the detail at the moment, then that will be a focus for my group. I just think I would finish with just a plea, really. I understand that this is an emotive subject, like I've said, and it does need to be discussed, of course. But there is the danger, and I would just have a plea to all members, to exercise some constraint and control around some of the language and perhaps some of the comments that are made. And again, these things are hard enough to manage with the authorities as it is. And I would just say, please don't fan the fires of those groups that their only raison d'etre is to do us and our communities harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lufburi Rood.
Yeah, I'm an asylum. Following from the previous councillor's comment, I have met, unfortunately, in a recent residents' meeting, members of the far-right came to one of my meetings, so I personally met them. Which for me, I understand personally, because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Britain's history of asylum seekers. My own grandmother was the only part member of her family that survived the Holocaust. So this is an important subject to me, this is personal. And I don't think, I personally was the only non-white person in my special needs school as a child. So I know what it's like to be in a community and these people are going to be frightened, they're going to be upset. And yes, they probably will be, not just young, single people, there will be all sorts of ranges. But I think it's important that we remember the responsibilities. I don't, I'm very disappointed that I have constituents that believe like that and I refer them to appropriate people. But I think that what we're doing as a county is right because this county has long, and England has a long story as a beacon for people who need help. And I think that's what we should continue and not listen, as previous councillors have inflamed tensions, by this small minority of people, especially the recent protests I've noticed in your area, because we have a duty to protect people. Because if we didn't, one day, we don't know, that could happen to ourselves. I just think I would never be in a position that, I could never imagine that, forty years on my own, I could never imagine that my own grandmother, who is, yes, I can, is personally something that matters to me because if it wasn't for the kindness of Bedfordshire, which is where she came, and Staffordshire took actually my daughter's grandmother, actually, in the same instance. So we have to remember that we have a history and we should be proud of how we treat people who come from vulnerable communities and we should be right to defend that.
Can I gently remind members that we can only speak once on an item. If you've already spoken, you can't speak again. Councillor Caroline Trowbridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As I was the councillor to oppose the original planning application, I really feel a need to speak on this appeal. Anybody who knows me knows I would help anyone in need and feel saddened by war between countries as this has a catastrophic effect on innocent people. Stafford has always been a welcome place for refugees. Five years ago, we saw Syrians flee in war. Most are now settled, speaking English as a second language and have jobs and are absolutely part of our community. Then Staffordshire welcomed Afghans, Afghanis and Ukrainians equally with open arms. You may think it's strange then that I was the county councillor who, by sitting on vulnerable persons resettlement scheme, actually opposed this planning application. I opposed it because I didn't think it's suitable for 481 residents and nowhere near big enough. The three-day inquiry, I must say, which was chaired by Gareth Jones at Stafford Rugby Club, which I attended the whole three days, I must state was very fair and very open. I met some amazing people, some opposing the proposal, many on the grounds that it wasn't best for the vulnerable asylum seekers and some happy to help settle the refugees into Stafford as it became their home. Lack of health and care came up again and again, and still it is a worry for me as the World Health Authority stated that between five and forty percent will come over with some health needs, which was brought up by many of the members of the public, which, like myself, was allowed to speak. But of course, people spoke from the heart and not about a planning application. Now the decision is final, I am sure Stafford and the rest of Staffordshire will welcome the asylum seekers who end up living, working and becoming part of our diverse and beautiful community. I know Theo Clark MP has already had meetings to discuss any financial implications this may have on Stafford. But the Hall of Residents will need to have some changes to comply with the amended planning application first, which I'm sure Stafford Borough Council are working with Serco to make sure this residence is fit for purpose. Just to add in, as the comment was about the young, single adults on a temporary basis, the King's Council who represented Serco, they themselves stated it will more than likely be young, single adults. I would like to thank every person who spoke at the inquiry. I know many put hours of work and absolutely spoke from the heart. A lot about mental health and PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder, sorry. And I met many armed forces who were passionate about this. I've made some wonderful friends who, like myself, just want what is best for the local area. I thank you all for listening.
I call the Vice-Chairman councillor Colin Gretrix.
Thank you, chairman. It's a rarity for the Vice-Chairman to speak. I just wanted to raise a point of information, really, because we've already had the Portfolio Holder speak on this and we've had the person who has responsibility for the Authority on Safeguarding already speak. And all I would say from a point of information is that this item is to discuss how the council gets prepared for the asylum visitors visiting. If you look at the second paragraph on page forty, it talks about working with Serco, Stafford Borough Council and other partners to ensure services are provided and also receiving the support for the asylum seekers. We're not here to debate the asylum decision. We're not here to debate internal discussions within Stafford Borough. We're here really to recognise that we need to prepare. And that's the point of information I'd like to raise for those future speakers.
Councillor John Francis.
Thank you, chairman. Well, this is an anathema, isn't it? We've got serious issues in the country. We've got serious issues with the NHS. We've got serious issues with transport and infrastructure. And the problem is with illegal immigrants, which there are, a lot of them. And they're asylum seekers.
Just, oh, Mr Francis, Mr Francis, thank you. I'll ask you, councillor Pardaisi, if you allow the speaker to speak. Thank you very much. And if I do interrupt, Mr Francis, I'd appreciate if you'd stop speaking. But can I just ask, please be very careful with your language and take on board what the Vice-Chair, thank you. I'm still speaking, Mr Francis, and take on board what the Vice-Chairman's just said.
Absolutely, chairman. And it's been said in Parliament. I'm just repeating what's been said in other places, so. I'm not against immigration. I think it's been fantastic. I love the Commonwealth. We have Indians in our family group who came over in the sixties and I've worked with a lot of them and I've got friends who are doctors and they're fantastic people, Indians, Pakistanis, Iranians, Afghanis. We've got unaccompanied asylum-seeking children in our school and they are absolutely wonderful children. Not against it at all. I've had emails, phone calls by the dozen over this from my constituents who live in the area. So I'm here to represent them. That's what they elected me for. So I've got to speak on it, whether I wanted to or not. The problem with this application, that's already been passed and I agree with what Carolyn said, it's in the wrong place because it's next to an army camp, there's a primary school next door, there's a sports facility opposite, a high school and the police HQ. So there's some serious issues here. Fantastic that we can house these people and I totally agree with it and I agree with what councillor Pardaisi said. We should not say that they're single males, we don't know that. So as Carolyn has said in the King's Speech, that's what they alluded to. But this accommodation, and I've been into that accommodation when it was student halls for engineering, and to be quite frank, they're like prison cells, they're very small and really, it's not the right accommodation for these people. And I do worry how we're going to facilitate their integration from a facility like that. It just doesn't work. So to be quite frank, chairman, I think it's the wrong accommodation in the wrong place. If it was the right accommodation in the right place, I wouldn't oppose it at all because we have got to look after these people. The problem is we've had wars in Iraq and Iran and Syria that have caused this problem. So we've got to accommodate them.
Mr Francis, you've gone, sorry, Mr Francis, and if you could be a little bit quiet, I would genuinely appreciate it. You've gone way off subject, Mr Francis. Okay, please read and listen to what the Vice-Chairman said. So I'll allow you a minute or two or even less than that to summarise. But, Mr Francis, you have genuinely gone off subject on this. Look at what it says in the Leader's Statement and that's what we're discussing today. Do you want to say anything else, Mr Francis? I'm fully prepared to let you. Councillor Martin Whinney.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm not going to say many words. I agree entirely with what councillor Spencer said about making sure that we don't have radical groups appearing in, particularly in Stafford. Stafford's a wonderful, leafy place and the last thing we want is sort of people protesting in a nasty way. The other thing that I would say is that I agree again, we've got to make sure that these, and let me just see what the paperwork says. So those are correct. These asylum seekers is what it says here. And it does also say 500 people. And it does also say 500 people, which is likely to be young, single adults on a temporary basis, that they are fully looked after. But I've heard very little so far in this conversation about keeping residents informed. And I've had a lot of people, as John has, saying they're really concerned about this. Great that we've got the services involved, the police, the NHS and everyone else. CIRCO are involved. But I've not heard anything that says, this is what we're going to do for you, local resident who's got fears and worries about what's going to happen as we go forwards. So please, please, and that does go within the remit as has been mentioned by the Deputy Chairman, please keep local residents and the wider area of residents informed. And I think the same happens at County. It's okay doing these things but you need to tell people, even if they get bored with it, they need to know exactly what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Winington. I'm ending this debate by calling councillor Alan White. I have no further speakers, by the way.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And can I pay particular tribute to the Vice-Chairman of Council for his wise words? I think they were extremely helpful and allowed us to focus on the item that we are discussing here in the leader's statement. We cannot relitigate the Planning Committee discussion that took place in Stafford Borough Council or indeed what happened at the inquiry. People had the opportunity and indeed councillor Trobridge spoke very well at the inquiry about her concerns around the appeal. So that decision is made. What we have to do is reflect on the implications for the residents of Stafford Borough as a consequence of asylum seekers seeking refuge in this part of Staffordshire. The fact is that this was students' accommodation at one time which housed a number of students who used services locally. There is going to be a different group of people coming in, probably a similar sort of number to the number of students that were in there at one time, who will be housed locally and will be using services. It is on us here in this chamber to make sure that the services that are required by the asylum seekers remain accessible to those people who live here and that there shouldn't be any implications for them as a consequence of their arrival. That's our duty, I think. And to make sure that those people who are seeking asylum in this place are given a welcome which is reflective of the welcome Staffordshire would give to anybody coming to visit or stay in this county. I think it was councillor Trobridge, it could have been somebody else, who raised the point about the KC's comments during the inquiry about the nature of the people who are likely to be coming to stay at the accommodation being young, single adults. Councillor Pardesi, I think that deals with that part. It was said by another who's a King's Council. I think the thing that we need to reflect on as a county is just making sure that other parts of the country are carrying their fair share of the asylum seeker burden coming into this country. There are people coming to seek refuge in the United Kingdom. There are some parts of the United Kingdom who are taking asylum seekers and refugees and there are some who as yet have not got round to taking their share. And I, as leader of the County Council, I'm working hard to make sure that the Home Office recognise the fact that all of us across the United Kingdom need to be carrying their share of this piece of work. So with that, Mr Chairman, I'd like to give the Council assurance that my colleagues are both in Cabinet and the NHS and locally with the Borough Council are working very hard to make sure that when the asylum seekers arrive, we're able to provide them with the services that they need. But as importantly, making sure that those people who live in Stafford Borough still have the same access to the services that they were used to before this application was approved. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Leader. Moving on to item ten on the leading statements, which is item ten, which is Ironman seventy point three, Staffordshire. I have a speaker, whoever it is has pressed the wrong button. It said seat fifty-four. Oh, thank you, you've pressed the wrong button, councillor McMon. But we're quite comfortable with that one.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not on. This is a crying shame that we've lost this. And it would be remiss of us just to let that go and not consider a replacement. We have remarkable infrastructure in this county. And I mean by the infrastructure the fact that we're a rural county. So why don't we try our own? It won't have the panache of the Ironman perhaps. It may not be a triathlon, it may not be three events, but at least we should try and have a look at it. And if it's homegrown, it's likely to improve the standing of the county considerably, enhance the economy. And what's of particular interest to me is if it's homegrown, there may be more of a public health legacy. There may be more folk taking on, whatever it might be, cycling or whatever. I'm reminded, if I may, of my roots and the Scotland 500, where it's all north of Inverness and they go all the way around the west coast, up the Isle of Loughalsh and all these beautiful places and down the east side back to Inverness. And people are talking about that now. Not just in the UK. And why can't we consider something similar in Staffordshire? And I would hope the Cabinet would give that a look and see what could come of it. We don't want to miss out. It's a shame they've made this decision but I think we should look at what we could do. Thank you.
councillor Ian Parry.
Ironman, I think, is a brand for which seems to have gripped people, particularly people who are elite athletes or council leaders who want to get involved in these things. And I think whilst this may well be seen as a loss, I think it's also an opportunity as Joe McMon has just said. In other parts of the country, I've observed that rather than using Ironman branded stuff, there is all sorts of other formats of Ironman, which is more inclusive perhaps, you know, where you break down the sport or you make them multidiscipline-type events. But people of less ability than council leaders may well wish to get involved in. And I think that would perhaps allow us to encourage more people to participate and to broaden its appeal and possibly to have greater net benefit for the county.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As a former competitor myself, I know many people will share in the disappointment. It's a painful event, ladies and gentlemen, okay? It's really, really, really hard. And so for spectators, maybe not. But I know it got a mixed reception in some parts of the county because some people objected to their roads being closed temporarily for a four-hour period to let the cycle race go past or the run go through. But actually, if you saw the number of people in the centre of Stafford at the finish line when the event took place, thousands of people on occasions would turn up to wish the competitors well. And when it started, there were thousands of people would come into the county of Staffordshire and they'd be booking bed and breakfasts, hotels across the county, putting millions of pounds into the local economy. And I think if it's not- we had a plan at one time to create Staffordshire as a destination for sporting events because we wanted to attract people into the great offer that we had, the rolling countryside over in the east of Staffordshire. Absolutely stunning if you've never had the chance to cycle through that on a bicycle wearing next to nothing and feeling completely shattered. But be that as it may, it is disappointing that it has come to an end. And it was always nice at the end of the event to be greeted by a council colleague who'd throw a medal around my shoulders, but my neck, thank you. But I do recall the first event that took place and if you'll just forgive me councillor Parry because this is on you. It was at Shugborough and councillor Parry was stood on the stairs with his lovely wife, looking the part, to say the least. And there were competitors from all around the world. And somebody came up to councillor Parry and said, in some sort of Spanish accent, is this your house? Do you own it? Do you live here? Now, I'm not sure what answer councillor Parry gave but the competitor walked away looking very impressed. So subsequently, he sold it. He just had one of his houses. But it is a lovely thing to have done and it is also a shame that it's lost. But I do hope that we are able to continue to attract events, be it in Chase Water or be it half marathons in Stafford or Lichfield or wherever, because I think that generally increases people's health and actually supports the local economy.
Moving on to item eleven. It says coronation. Leader, I think it should say coronation babies, do you? I was here in the office that day when you and Victoria were here with all those lovely babies. And I have one speaker, Victoria Wilson. Or is that from the last item? Okay, in that case, I have no speakers. Do you want to speak, Leader? Moving on to item twelve, which is the Armed Forces Day and Windrush seventy-five. councillor Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chairman. And sorry for being late this morning, unfortunately. The back gave out so I had to go and get it sorted. Tamworth held a massive event on Armed Forces Day in the lovely Castle Grounds. And I just wanted to draw people's attention to. Eighteen years ago this week, we lost three amazing lads from Staffordshire in Al Amara in Iraq. Leon Spicer, twenty-six. Phil Hewitt, twenty-one, no relation. And Richard Shearer, twenty-six. It makes things more poignant when you actually know the people that didn't come back. They were part of the Staffordshire Regiment and fought for Queen and country at the time. And at such a young age, they gave the ultimate sacrifice. So for somebody that's also served in the Armed Forces, I'm really pleased that all district councils and the Staffordshire County Council have signed up to the Armed Forces Covenant. And in Tamworth, we're currently working with businesses to also take on that covenant to support people that come out of the Armed Forces that need a job, they need somewhere to live. And I think it's justified that we give them the respect that they deserve and help them into civilian life. Thank you, Chair.
I have no further speakers on this item. Do you want to speak? No, moving on to item thirteen, which is fostering communities. I have no speakers, so I'm going to call the Cabinet member. No, I'm just going to delay that just a second. I'm going to call Keith Flunder, councillor Keith Flunder.
Thank you, Chair. I just really wanted to say that I'd attended the awards day itself. I found the stories that people were telling me from the various families and individuals who looked after our foster children for the last up to forty years, if you believe that or not. But it's absolutely fantastic. Myself and Anne and a few others, we shuffled our way up and down the chair at the front here, giving out all the awards to people. I think it was something that I wasn't aware happened that many times. And can I just thank the people for inviting me to come to that event itself and for hearing all the stories from the people there. It's a fantastic service that these fostering families deliver to all our benefit. All of us foster parents here, we all look after the children collectively as county councillors. And I just wanted to say that the service that these people provide is absolutely fantastic, without which we would struggle even further than we do with our children's services. And it's just absolutely brilliant to see that these people are out there. And I would urge, if people are listening to this, that if anyone wanted to become a foster parent, I can certainly say that it's well worthwhile for certain people to become foster parents. And once again, thank you. And thank you to all the people that won awards and got accommodations and everything else. So thank you again. Cheers. Thank you.
councillor Victoria Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. I was also at the awards ceremony and I was really humbled actually to see all of these wonderful people who look after our most vulnerable children in this county. I absolutely echo everything that Mr Flunder has just said. It was an honour and a pleasure to be at this ceremony. We're all corporate parents here, aren't we? As a corporate parent myself, I was really staggered by the amount of selfless people and time that these people are prepared to offer. And it's not just once in their lives. It's again and again and again. With one of them actually forty years of fostering in this county, which were absolutely brilliant. So these people, some of these children have a myriad of physical and mental health issues. And this is a big ask. But I would echo the question. If there is anybody in this county that feels that they can help, absolutely get in touch. It's a wonderful scheme. Thank you.
councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you, Chairman. And again, the award ceremony, it was an absolutely fantastic occasion. And as a former foster parent, I've got to say to you, seeing the joy that you can bring to a child that's come from a really terrible background and to bring him into your home and give them the love and the care that they need, it's an absolutely, can I say, a warming and a lovely feeling that you get as well, knowing that you're helping a child that has really, really been in a bad situation. So like councillor Wilson said, if you know of anybody in your society that you can encourage to foster, then please ask them to do so. It's so important that we give these children a better start in life. Thank you.
councillor Marks.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. And can I thank the three previous speakers who attended that award ceremony where we celebrated 651 years of foster care experience? And I won't go over the great points that have already been made but just reiterate one humorous story that was said there. And that was the lady that got the award for forty years. When she applied, obviously just over forty years ago, the head of the fostering team or social worker turned up on her door to say, thank you very much, you've been successful in your application. She obviously says, oh, thank you very much. And then the social worker says, and by the way, we've got your first foster child in the car waiting for you. Is it okay to accommodate that child now? Finding caring, loving homes for children in our care is absolutely essential. We have over 700 children currently with foster carers around the county and they provide a magnificent service. They get immense amount of reward out of it. They tell stories, they explain the rewards they get, let alone the service and the love they provide to children. So it is absolutely essential that we can try and grow the amount of foster carers we have got. There has been a national reduction, which is mirrored in Staffordshire, of the amount of foster carers that we've got. So we continue constantly to have media events and communications to try and encourage people to come forward for foster carers. And we've been working hard on other areas of foster caring, specialist programmes around resilient fostering, where we're able to accommodate with foster carers some of the more complex children in our care. And we've started with others, a Mockingbird programme, which is where experienced foster carers provide help and support for new and less experienced foster carers. And also our emergency foster care programme. So and as was pointed out, we're all we're all corporate parents in this chamber and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. So it is important that we all take on that responsibility and try and encourage people where they are interested to become foster carers. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
And thank you councillor Sutton. As an ex-foster carer myself for many years, I can only echo what everybody said. It can be incredibly rewarding. Moving on to item fourteen of the leading statements, which is the school crossing patrols. And I have quite a number of speakers. councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. We had a great debate in this chamber many years ago over cutting of school crossing patrols. I know we've got the numbers here now. But it is a great thing that we must now look at. We must never cut again. When a risk assessment has been done on school crossing patrols, it's now seventy years old this year. I know there are schools across the county that perhaps are still suffering because we had to make those essential decisions. And they were essential decisions, they weren't made willy-nilly. But really, for the seventy years, I've got a new sc- crossing patrol- willy-nilly. But really, for the 70 years, I've got a new school crossing patrol ward in my area. She's now got, with the school have bought, a camera which she wears every day. It is already slowing traffic down. Drivers who get aggressive and drive towards her are now being monitored. It's been recorded, and it's helpful. But can I just thank everyone who's been a school crossing ward over those 70 years, who perhaps is still out there doing it? Because we have people, as it says, the age 83. They gave a great service to us. Well, they're not volunteers, they are not well paid, so really, they're close to being volunteers. So can I thank them for everything they do? But also thank the council who have supported my school, St Luke's in Cannock. With this, being allowed to wear this camera, it's on a main road, and it will save children's lives. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would like to add my congratulations to our school crossing patrols, particularly having survived 70 years. Now, as the previous speaker just said, it was less than five years ago that this council proposed a more than half a million pound cut to the service, on the mistaken assumption that schools could find the funding down the backs of their sofas. And clearly, that wasn't the case, and schools made that very clear. Thousands of people signed petitions. I proposed a motion in this chamber to think again about the cuts to the service. That debate was cut short, I think simply because of embarrassment factor, because actually, there was no defence. There was no defence for cutting that service, which is so essential to so many children. Because these school crossing patrols, you know, they're out in all ways, they're looking after children crossing very busy roads at a time when people are rushing to get to work or whatever. And as councillor Snape said, sometimes, sadly, school crossing patrols can encounter aggression and insults and even threats. And so it is vital, the work they do. And I think we should congratulate them. And I very much hope that we'll be in a position to support them for many years into the future, and that we never revisit the plan to cut the service. It was a wrong decision, and luckily, it was overturned. Thank you.
I'm going to... Councillor Williams, I'm going to take your point of order. It had occurred to me that you drifted off somewhat. If you want to summarise what you said, that's fine, but not going back on to what happened five years ago on the political statement.
Repeating what he said.
Say it again.
I'm just repeating what councillor Snape said. He alluded to the same issue.
I accept what you're saying. What you used it, excuse me, councillor Atkins, but you used it as a criticism of this council, and you're entitled to do that. But these points were simply about congratulating the service after 70 years.
Which is what I did.
And I'll take your point. Thank you. Councillor Ian Parry.
Sorry, Chair. Thank you. I'm always surprised when you call me Chair. I'm the youngest of six children, and I remember my crossing patrol warden, lollipop man he was called in those days, forgive the sexist remark there, I know we've moved on, crossing patrol, who actually crossed, not just myself as the youngest of my family, but every one of my brothers and sisters. And he looked about 102 when he crossed me over, so I don't know how old he eventually was before he retired. So we do have a duty of gratitude to all of those people throughout this county who do, almost voluntarily, because it's not the best paid job there is, almost voluntarily, turn up twice a day to cross children over the roads. I don't wish to be political either, Mr. Chairman, but we have never cut school crossing patrols in this county. What we have done is tried to make them safer in that we replace when someone retires with a pelican crossing or some other similar crossing that arguably is a safer option and is permanent. We don't provide crossing patrols on Saturdays and Sundays, and still children have need to cross the road. So we try to provide safe crossings, as well as in school days, when there's greater volume of children, an additional safety provision. We're struggling a little bit at the moment, though, aren't we? Because there are quite a number of vacancies in the county. And this may well be reflective of the fact that in lots of occupations and lots of jobs, employers are struggling to recruit, and we're struggling to recruit for crossing patrol officers. So I encourage anybody who's interested in this kind of work, which is really important, highly valuable to communities and extremely valuable to schools and childrens, to approach us. We'd be delighted. And there are plenty vacancies throughout the county, or there are some vacancies, should I say, across the country. I don't know exactly how many. But a fantastic job that they all do for us, and a personal sacrifice, because I don't know about you, but if you've got to turn up twice a day at the same spot, that is some kind of commitment, isn't it? And you'd have to make it worth my while, I have to say, to be able to do that. So I'm deeply grateful to all of those people who've done it. But we have never, ever made crossing patrol members redundant. We've only replaced when people have retired.
Councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to raise the point that I've attended several of the events where the actual crossing patrols were invited in and were given a celebratory event at different locations throughout the county. And again, I would like to personally thank them, as I did on those days, for the work that they do. And they feel it's a really, really good job to have. It's one that gives them a lot of self-satisfaction, but also makes them feel very much part of their communities. And it's something that I would encourage. And we do still have some vacancies. And I would echo the comments of everybody else to say that, can we ensure, you know, if you are interested in that, please do look to see if you would be interested and would be able to be part of our team. You will get all of your equipment, you will get all of your training, and you will also be helping your community and also helping with your own mental health and wellbeing, as I was told by everybody else. So congratulations to the teams and the teams that look after them as well. And I have to say, from each one of those events, I was made very, very welcome, and also the fact that everybody seemed to be very, very happy with what was going on. So congratulations, it's well done from this county. Thank you.
Councillor Simon Take.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add my congratulations and the positive comments and endorse those. I think I remember the 60th anniversary of the Parking Patrol service. I was, that year, Philip Atkins had asked me to be the Cabinet Support Member for Highways and Transport. So I remember going along to all the events, I remember going along to many press meeting photo opportunities across the county, really getting to meet a lot of the crossing patrol ladies and gentlemen at that time. And I remember one of them said to me, 'Oh, it'll never make its 70th year, you know, you're going to cut it like everybody else has across the country.' I know we just had that debate about, you know, five or six years ago, when it was up as part of the MTFS. I'm glad it didn't go through. But I said then, I think, for the work that they'd done, I think even said in this chamber at the time, that, you know, they are worth their weight in gold in communities. And on a personal note, my mother used to be a crossing patrol person at St Margaret's Church in Woolstan for a number of years. And I was absolutely at that school during that period. So having your mum as the crossing patrol lady was a bit of a kudos, you know. And I remember when she retired, the amount of cards she got, flowers, there was even a special assembly just for the crossing, for my mum retiring. So that just shows how in communities, I think that's still the same now, in the communities and the schools where they operate, they're worth their weight in gold, as I said. I think on the point which councillor Snape made about those cameras, I think what he's got there is excellent. My mum used to come home with many horror stories of how she and, you know, pupils at the school had just avoided being knocked over and etc. So that modern technology we're using now is helping our crossing patrols to be safer, and that's only for the better. Thank you.
Moving on to item 15, on the ladies' statement and the final item, which is the Samaritans. Councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to first of all thank the leader for putting this on his statement, actually. So thank you, Alan. It was something I asked him if he would do, because I do feel, we've talked a lot this morning about volunteers, and the Samaritans, it's their 70th year in operation, but it's their 60th in Staffordborough. So with that thought in mind, I thought it might be a good idea if we were to plant a tree in all our districts to commemorate the 70 years that they've been in operation in Staffordshire. Let's remember they're working 365 days a year, 24/7, giving out advice and help to people that need it and are in desperate need of some help. So can I ask you all, please, if you would, take it to your districts and ask them if they will plant a tree in your local parts somewhere to commemorate the Samaritans? Thank you.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you. I wasn't going to speak on this comment. I totally applaud the work that the Samaritans have been doing, and it's also a 70th year anniversary. Your suggestion is absolutely wonderful suggestion. And what I would ask, just as an aide memoir, is perhaps if an email could go round to councillors, and then we can forward it to our town class, because I don't think there'd be any pushback on that. And I think it'd be very good if we can all have something to help us remember to do it. And yes, we'll certainly do that, definitely. Thank you.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So a bit of family trivia. My big brother was one of the senior leadership team at Samaritans for several years. And the main part of his role was engaging with the volunteers, doing all of the internal communication and engagement with those people. And it's something we've talked quite a lot about over the years. He'd previously done similar roles in banks and energy companies and places like that, and he decided that he wanted to do something that he felt a bit happier about turning up to work to do. And my goodness, he did. And the stories about the sort of challenges that volunteers at Samaritans face on the phone each day, I don't need to tell you about, we're all familiar with that. But the thing that he often mentioned to me that I thought was worth raising, was what an engaged, an engaging bunch of people, the volunteers at Samaritans are. They come from all walks of life, they bring a huge range of skills to that role. And one of the great things about Samaritans is that they're really interested in taking that knowledge and learning that those people have and applying it to what they do. So there's been quite a bit of discussion about volunteering today, different types, you know, whether you want to stand outside and get rained on for a small fee as a school crossing patrol member, or whether you want to do something like this. That world of volunteering is vast, and there is something for everybody out there. But Samaritans are a wonderful organisation, a great one, I think, for really engaged, thinking people who want to make a difference in a very, very specific way. And my goodness, what a difference they make to a lot of people, both in Staffordshire and around the country. Thank you.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Samaritans have quite a good vetting process. You can't just turn up and be a Samaritan. You need a certain set of characteristics to be a Samaritan. And I'm really pleased that that is the case. When I was 18, my first girlfriend left me, and I was inconsolable. She left me for somebody who was better looking and more solvent. After, I know. And my mother, it's a smaller violin than that, Graeme, that you need. My mother, after about three days, grew weary of my outlook. All right, crying, yes. So she clipped me round the ear, a good'un, and said, 'Get over yourself.' Anyway, about two or three years later, she decided she wants to volunteer to be a Samaritan. And my stepdad said, 'Say what? Really? Have you got the right sort of nature to be a Samaritan?' Because her inclination was to say, 'Get a grip of yourself.' Anyway, she went for the interview, and then she came out, and she was inconsolable because she couldn't believe that the Samaritans wouldn't take her offer of becoming a Samaritan. I, on the other hand, was quite reassured. Samaritans do wonderful work, but it's only a certain sort of person that can be a Samaritan. And if you think about the sort of people, the circumstances that people find themselves in when they're phoning the Samaritans, they are in desperate straits, and they need somebody to listen to them. And that's what my mother couldn't do. She's gone now, so I can talk about her this way. But anyway, I'm grateful for all the work that they do. All across the county of Staffordshire, you see on motorway bridges, there are signs saying, you know, 'Please think twice, call this number.' It costs money to do all this sort of stuff. The time that people offer to provide that support, we're all hugely grateful. And thank you to the Samaritans, and thank goodness, they didn't pick my mum. Thank you.
Councillor White, thank you for sharing that. We're all enthralled and to think that somebody could find somebody better looking. Most of my girlfriends left me because they found somebody better looking, and that wouldn't be a surprise. That was item 15. That's the end of the report. So I move the report received. Is that agreed? Thank you. Moving on to item 6, recommendations to the council. There's two parts, part A and part B. And part I is the IRP, which is the recruitment, the IRP. Councillor Worthington, will you move consideration on the report, please?
The standard of the applicants for the possession of the independent remuneration panel was quite amazing. We could have appointed any of them. They were all excellent. And we ended up choosing three, but I think because of the rules and regulations, we can only accept two. They were that good. So I'd just like to say a big thank you to all the people who applied, because it was really a very high standard. Thank you.
Councillor Trobridge, will you second?
Happy to second.
I have one speaker, Mark Whittington. Councillor Mark Whittington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say a few words as chairman of the Rights of Way panel. Obviously, this report's from the Deputy Chief Executive to the Audit Committee. And it's really just to say that...
Councillor Worthington, you're so far in front of us. We're on item 6, which is the IRP recommendations.
You're on the IRP first?
Yes.
A nice feet, please, on the 6B then.
Well, you can when the time comes, councillor. Yeah. I've got councillor Smith. Are you on the right item, councillor Smith? David Smith? I'm going, councillor Smith, your light is on. Okay, I think I did make it clear that it was A and B, and we was talking about A. And it was councillor Worthington who moved the IRP recommendations. I haven't, I've still got your light on, David Smith, so I presume you don't want to speak on this item. Brilliant. Councillor Worthington, do you want to respond? Well, exactly.
I think we can just move it on, Chairman.
It has been moved and seconded that the recommendation contained in the report to be approved. Is that agreed? Now councillor Whittington and councillor Smith, we're back with you. This is item B, Updates to the Scheme of Delegation in Relation to the Staffordshire County Council's Responsibilities under Section 53 of the Wildlife and Countryside Act. Councillor Worthington, will you move the consideration, please?
I move consideration of the report, Chairman. Thank you.
Councillor Trobridge, would you be kind enough to second?
Yes, may I second that?
Councillor Mark Whittington, de jour vu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for the confusion. But that's why we're here, to be confused, isn't it? Right. So this, item 6B, is a report from the Deputy Chief Executive to the Audit Committee. And I just wanted really to give members a little bit of background about what the Countryside Rights of Way panel do. As with planning, we are sort of quasi-legal, and for that reason, a little bit removed from the county council. So it's a strange place we find ourselves in. The CRO panel, as with planning, has some important decisions to make and does occasionally get taken to judicial review. We've had two, I think, one from planning and one for rights of way. These of way. These are incredibly important for the council because we've sort of dodged the bullet a couple of times and we are talking about millions of pounds' worth of cases. The actual CRO panel, the main job we do is to consider applications to go, for footpaths to go on to the definitive map. Now, I'm sure most of you don't know we've got a definitive footpath map, but it is managed by the county council. And there are, and people like John Francis will confer, there's cases from 100, 200 years ago, footpaths that we are saying legally they should be sort of put on to the definitive map. At the moment, we're catching up slowly. We're sort of at 1991 with our applications, which is 30 years ago. So some of the people who've asked for it to put on the definitive map and some of the people who have actually given evidence have died and sadly passed on and not even seen what's happened with these orders. So it is, it is quite interesting, but at the same time frustrating. We've got 290 applications at the moment in the pipeline. We've got 67 who the Secretary of State has said that we should hear and make a decision on. It's very resource-heavy and I thank the leader and the officers for making sure that we have adequate resources. But as I say, it's one of those committees which is incredibly interesting as well. A lot of the evidence is around dive maps, old railway maps. We're looking at footpaths that go along railways that have been closed for 50 years, obviously. So, so interesting. And I think that the best application I've had so far as chairman and the committees had was last Friday, when we had an application for a definitive map at Shallowford, just on the doorstep of the Isaac Walton Cottage. That went across to Quaker burial ground. And one of the points of evidence, which I think was possibly not materially evidence, was that there was a renowned ghost that walked the footpath, so it must be right. No, it was a lady ghost, the Lady Quaker. So as I say, thank you to the members of the CRO panel for coming along and thank you to the officers.
councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I reinforce what the chairman has said, particularly with regard to the item which has come to the council today? We are looking to delegating certain powers to officers. That's all very well and good, but to bear in mind that we are effectively sitting as near comparable to a magistrate's court as you can have. We are making legally binding decisions. If those decisions go wrong, then we end up with, as happened with that, going into details, something which potentially could have cost us tens of thousands of pounds. So it's a committee or a panel which sits to one side of this council, but has a most important role, but very rarely ever comes here. The point that I wish to make today, and I'm concerned that we have minuted, is that the panel were not wholly happy with the fact that we were going to be delegating certain authorities to officers. The main reason for that is because of the legal role of the panel, that unless that decision was being made on the basis of it being totally uncontested, so that there was not likely to be any after-effects or anything that would come back and hit the panel, we didn't want an officer to be in a situation where they'd made a legal decision for which the panel had stepped sideways from actually making that decision. I do understand that we have a tremendous backlog of work to be done and that that can only be dealt with once all this massive amount of research has been completed. But we need to be extremely careful over the delegation of powers to officers. And I want to reinforce to this council that the committee made the decision on the basis that only totally uncontested applications would be considered and approved by officers. Otherwise, it will come to the panel for a proper decision. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a couple of points for information. I'd like to give council reassurance that the county solicitor is looking into the provision of adequate resources to the committee. It is very legally intensive, the work of the countryside and rights of way panel, and it is very important that that work is done diligently and following due process, as well the chairman and vice chairman of the committee know. It is a quasi-judicial committee. It does make legally binding decisions. But I think every single member of this committee are familiar with quasi-judicial committees. If we think about planning committees, they make decisions which are legally binding and therefore we have an understanding of how delegation might work. I think councillor Smith's point about those uncontested cases, where it's clearly a sort of open and shut case, being delegated to officers, it's a well-made point. Thank you for airing that in this chamber. And we will bear that in mind as we move forward with the reforms to the countryside and rights of way panel. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I have no further speakers. Councillor Worthington, do you wish to respond?
Mr Chairman, that's fine.
Thank you, councillor Worthington. It has been moved and seconded that the recommendations contained in the report be approved. Is that agreed? Moving on to item seven, the overview and scrutiny annual report for 2022/23. Councillor Greatrix, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I should thank councillor Mike Wilcox for not being present and giving his apologies. It gives me the opportunity to stand for a second time and formally propose that we adopt the report of the last 12 months of overview and scrutiny. Overview and scrutiny continues to play that vital role of both scrutiny, to hold the decisions of the council up to the mirror and see that they make sense, and the overview side of things, which is to work with the cabinet, looking for opportunities to improve decision-making. The committee sought to focus on the critical issues, i.e. not the sidelined issues, but the main thrust of the matter that the council looks after, to be constructive on its input and try and make better decisions for the rights of our residents. Councillor Wilcox, in the opening paragraph, refers to the energy and enthusiasm of the members. And I would have this opportunity therefore to thank those members of corporate review in particular, and also the coordinating group of chairs and vice chair roles for their contributions during the year, giving that energy and enthusiasm, including things like the MTFS, which is not the most exciting of subjects to get involved in. But I thank the members who did get involved in that for their contributions during the year. What I would do with your permission, Chair, is to invite the various chairs or vice chairs, in some cases, of the four ONS groups to highlight any particular work that they would like to bring to the attention of other members. If I could start with Jill Heath, who's the vice chair of corporate review.
The introduction. Last year, the corporate review, the corporate overview and scrutiny committee kept busy. We considered a wide range of issues in our meetings and workgroups. At meetings, we questioned detail in reports and made comments and recommendations to inform council and cabinet's decision-making. Our outcomes included a refreshed guidance and processes relating to governance and outside bodies. We kept an overview of corporate priorities, including climate change action plan and the integrated performance and finance performance. We scrutinised the children and families transformation programme, changes to the N trust contract, and we invited the chair and chief executive of Stoke-on-Trent and Staffordshire Local Enterprise Partnership to account for delivery of the various outcomes included in their annual delivery plan and raised questions on the LEP's work and bid process. We carried out pre-decision scrutiny of a variety of plans, policies and strategy and comments which were considered by cabinet when it made decisions. The committee also established two working groups to consider climate change and the medium-term financial strategy. Both groups will continue to meet this year. The MTFS groups scrutinised the budget, focused on the capital programme, assets, send transport, children in care and highway stroke capital improvements. 18 recommendations were made, 12 accepted in full and six accepted in part. So I think we did quite a good job of it, really. An update on recommendations and outcomes is due to be considered by the working group in August 2023. This year, the committee will maintain overview and scrutiny of the principles in the corporate plan that build a strong organisation, keep Staffordshire strong and look to future services and resources.
Thank you. Councillor Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure that was the right order, but obviously I'm the chair of process overview and scrutiny committee. I'm not going to go through the work that we've done because I'd be here all day. We've done absolutely loads. But I just wanted to highlight the, a couple if I may, the highways transformation programme. That's been both a very informative piece of hard work, but it also has been hard going to get where we are today. And I just wanted to thank Daryl and his team and also councillor David Williams for the effort and the time that's gone into that. And the other one was the bringing in of the household waste and recycling centres back in house. I think we can all agree that that has had some teething problems, but those are now ironed out and they are working better than they have. Got a few issues at Cannock, which has caused an extra workload, but I believe the officers are working through that. Also to draw attention, we did 10 meetings last year, three extra than the normal seven planned. And that's due to the expanse of the work programme that we took on. So I want to thank Jonathan Lindup and the team of scrutiny officers that helped us to get that work programme through. To the members that sit on the committee, everybody has had an input and your input has been invaluable. And also to the cabinet members who turn up and attend and take us through the processes and help us to deliver the delivery models that we've managed to achieve. So thank you, Chair, for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. I have two further scrutiny chairs. Councillor Spencer, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I won't go over the points that have already been made, although more than happy to go through any of the particular issues, perhaps outside of this meeting, if members would like more detail. I think I speak for the other chairs as well. I know that when we have our meetings, one of the questions that's never far from our minds is how this report starts on page 60. And it says, how has scrutiny added value? And we often talk about, are we making a difference? There is a worry that sometimes these processes can be simply talking shops and at worst, a sort of rubber stamp. What I would like to do, though, is just highlight a couple of examples from my own committee, which I think tends to show the real impact that these processes have. On page 66, you will see the prevention of further deaths report, Fishmongers Hall. That was a terrible incident that members will recall in London. Unfortunately, at the time of those murders, the murderer was being managed by partners here in Staffordshire. We called for that report to come to the committee and actually asked, as it says there, about whether the recommendations from it were being taken forward. I have to say, I was privileged to be invited by Staffordshire Police to come along to a joint partner event where they talked through the difference that that has made. I'm not sure, without that push and drive in organisations, whether some of these reports get quite the traction that they need. And being someone who's been involved in this process previously, the change was absolutely significant. Again, at the top of that page, it talks about the McAllister Review. Members will probably be aware that it's the unfortunate death of two young people. I really do believe that the feedback that we sent back to government around that made a significant difference. The last two on page 67 are particularly, I think, issues where we can show that the aims and the objectives of these panels is about giving people a voice. The young carers, several members wanted to meet with young carers. We had young carers into this building. And actually, it will live long in the memory, the meeting of the members with those young people. What it gave us an opportunity, though, is to listen to what they said. And also, probably 12 months later, we've had the opportunity to go back to them and describe how we've made changes and what that has meant. And I think that was really important. Finally, sexual harassment in schools. The decision was made that we would have an action day on that. And thank you to all those members who took part, where we invited a large number of educationalists, social services and various others. All the recommendations that came from that, every single one of them has been accepted and it's part of an action plan as we move forward. And thanks to councillor McMahon, I know that we've written to the minister and part of the discussion and part of those recommendations been taken forward in the online safety bill. I think it does, that does demonstrate that we can give people a voice. And it's incredible mechanism for encouraging positive change. And I would just echo the thoughts of the other chairs about thank you to all those members who contribute. It really is a positive process that does make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call the last, but certainly not the least, of the scrutiny chairs and vice chairs, councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, health and care, as I say, very short and sweet. The report in the council agenda gives a good insight into the work that's being done and a great deal of work that needs to be done, especially with the social care. The number of people needing care is on the increase and more staff need to be recruited. We're still being asked a question about primary care access. It's high on the agenda of the Health and Care Committee, along with access to dental treatments and the ambulance services, again, high on the agenda. Mental health, as we all know, is a growing problem, but it's good to hear and see people are taking mental health more seriously than before. The crisis centre at St George's, which will be open for all ages, should be open by the spring of next year. And that's really all I need to say, apart from thank you to everybody that's worked on the health and care and all the offices and that and all the good work that's been done and needs to be done. But Gerry Leithert's not in the chamber, so on behalf of Richard Cox and myself, can I say a very big thank you for the way that he chairs it. He's a very good chairman, so thank you.
I have no further speakers other than these scrutiny chairs and vice chairs. So I move the report. Received. Is that agreed? Moving on to item eight, the Staffordshire Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report 2022/23. Councillor Sutton, will you move consideration for the report, please? carolyn trowbridge, would you be kind enough a second, please?
Happy to second.
councillor Janice Sylvester-Hall.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good afternoon, colleagues, actually. Corporate parenting panel. I actually sit on that panel as a representative from Litchfield District Council and not as a county councillor. And it is, I would say, with some respect, that that is the one that I actually ask if I can remain to be a member of. And an indication of what I find as a rewarding panel. And some are a little bit more easy to quantify than others. And this is one of them. We mentioned about the volunteering during some of the previous sessions. And to me, this is one that I can see that I can add value to and also receive some satisfaction from with regards to the time that I personally put into it. The report itself, I would commend. You'll see that it's a very detailed and comprehensive report. And I would say an excellent representation of the meetings themselves. The officers, the members, the foster care representatives who we have on there, and also the voice of the young people is encapsulated in what you're seeing in that very report. As I say, I commend it and certainly to the people that's on there. And as far as us all being corporate parents, this is a valuable place where you can go and see all of the hard work that takes place to make sure that those young people are cared- cared about, not just cared for. Thank you.
Councillor Samantha Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to echo what Janice has said. She virtually took in a much better way than what I would, the words out of my mouth. I would just like to say, though, if, at the end of the day, for all the corporate parent people on that group, if it's not good enough for your children, then it's not good enough for those foster children, for those children in care. You need to like, look at it from that point of view because I think that's the most important angle to take. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. I've no further speakers, so councillor Sutton, do you want to respond to the debate? Oh, my apologies, it just flashed up. Do you mind if we just take Peter Chris John Dick? My apologies. I got it right first time I've been practising. Chris John Dick.
At least I pronounced my name right, Chair. Thank you.
It was close. Peter, thanks very much. My apologies. If you could just press the button a little bit faster, less time, next time, that would be great.
I welcome this report and the recommendations made. I'd like to thank all those who have contributed to it. Having been on the corporate parenting over the last two years, I've had the opportunity to see the wonderful work carried out by the foster parents, carers, children's services and the Voice Project. My apologies if I've missed anybody off that list. I've attended a number of Voice Project workshops. These have given me and other members of the committee the opportunity to hear first hand the views of the children in care. It's their voices that are the most important and we must listen to their experiences and they will help us shape the way the support we give them and the best possibility to start their lives in the right way and to fill full their ambitions and aspirations. We must remember as county councillors, we're all corporate parents, have an moral duty to support and safeguard our children, our communities and those who care for them. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Chris John Dick. I'm getting it right eventually. Chris John Dick, I've been practising all morning. Councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and of course, you're a member of the corporate parenting panel as well. I'd just like to echo the words that have been said by the other 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 members about corporate parenting, very, very well said, so I won't go over those grounds. One thing I will mention is that the corporate parenting panel has changed our direction just a little bit over the past twelve eighteen months and very much now taking into account the voice of children and let them lead on the areas of business that we want to consider and and look into. And that incorporates not them coming to us anymore, but small groups of councillors going to the Voice Project and listening firsthand to what the children have got to say. I'll just reiterate one of those in particular that I attended with councillor 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 Wilson, where actually we engaged with the children and actually, and this will sound a little bit strange, but watched them and engaged with them while they made Play-Doh models, what their concern their concerns were were. And it just showed to me the vast range of the children that we look after in our care, from children there who were very, very shy, trauma had happened in their life and they were concerned about it, to the other opposite of the spectrum, really confident, ambitious children. So there's all types of children that end up in our care and they all deserve the best that it is possible for us as a local authority to give to to offer. And I echo the words that councillor Thompson said around, if it's not good enough for the our own children, then we must consider, is it good enough for the children in our care? And just lastly, I'd like to thank all the officers and all members of corporate parenting panel for their work over the last twelve months and before. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. I move that report be received. Is that agreed? Moving on to item nine, twenty twenty two Community Fund and the twenty twenty two twenty three report and next steps. Councillor Wilson, will you move consideration and report, please? Councillor Alan Watt, would you second? I have no speakers on on this item. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have two speakers now. Councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Well, I wasn't going to speak on this until I saw this Hidden Warriors on page one one five. And I've got to say, it looks Hidden Warriors, it looks as if it's a big group of people and that, you know, the warriors. But this is one, well, he started this charity, Hidden Warriors. He's one guy, I don't believe there are Hidden Warriors throughout the country, but this one guy working in Stafford is a member of the Royal Navy and he's doing fun runs, he's doing everything to help a deprived area in Stafford Borough with food and everything. And I've got to, I've got to highlight it because, as I say, he's now going to do a run in in October with a big weight on his shoulders and that, again, raising funds to carry on working for the people in that area. I think it's absolutely fantastic what he does and being a member of the Royal Navy and a serving member, it's absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I I I welcome this full stop, really. The the Community Fund reaching out to those community groups is, as I said earlier, it's it's so valuable and those small amounts of money make masses of differences. And I'm very glad to see that within the report that my division is well covered because I I made a conscious decision not to give large amounts but to smaller amounts. And those smaller amounts are are covered i- in here. In particular, I want to raise the Ridwehr's Women's Institute. I'm always at their events. I don't know what that's saying, but what it is saying is that they do so much within the community of Hill Ridwehr and the rest of the Ridwehr's within my division. They're amazing people and it's all voluntary sector. So I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to support these groups. And thank you, Victoria, for the work that's behind it and may it continue. Thank you.
Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I commend the report and commend the work that we're able to do through the Community Fund, which I think is absolutely ideal? But I don't know whether the Community Fund is the place to look at it or whether we should be looking at our DHP fund or quite what we need to do. But since I became a councillor ten years ago, I used to get funds available to me to do things which I now no longer have. I used to be able to hire rooms for meetings together with parish councils. If I'm to do that now, I have to do it out of my own pocket. And so where we're looking at bringing communities together and the things which we need to do from our point of view as a councillor, we no longer have. And I think that that's something that we seriously need to review. How do we support members in the work that they need to do on their patch? And I don't think it fits into this and it clearly doesn't fit into the DHP. So maybe it's something that we ought to be seriously looking at elsewhere from a funding point of view. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Paul Northcott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I can say is that I welcome this and I commend this to my colleague councillor Wilson for the the work behind this. As you can see, on page one one three, my community has benefited from this very much. It's allowed and it was an enabler for the community first responders, which, as you know, Mr. Chairman, in the rural area, response times of ambulances are very, very long indeed in terms of critical life saving. This this was an enabler for this community first responders to actually attract further awards from other organisations as a match funding. So I commend projects like this. I commend the money that facilitates this. And I think it's very important that we we maintain those links with communities. And I see this as a valuable contribution and those councillors that perhaps have not fully spent all their money, please donate it to me and I'll spend it for them. Thank you.
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thanks, Chairman. I wasn't going to speak until I realised that none of my projects in my division in this, but I'm not, I'm not too bothered about that. I think there was just something that Richard Cox said about putting small amounts of money in because I think over the years when I was leader, some members put all of it towards one project, but others spent a lot of time in the patch, making sure that there are small pots of money because they do deliver a hell of a lot. And I think, I know it makes work for the officers in in doing the work, but I think that is really part of it. And I'm pleased to see that how much more money it's offered to support. And I've been looking at projects in the last year that really want little bits of pump priming and could go a long way. But the reason, the real reason I've stood up, and it is mentioned in the report, is to thank Pete Barker for all the work he did as an officer in setting up the fund because there was an awful lot around the criteria, making sure that it fitted. Because there are some people out there who just always put in for that. As soon as they see your local member's got ten thousand, three thousand, two thousand, they put straight in for the whole amount and you have the difficult job of saying, look, it's got to go round a fair few people, so we've got to be fair. But the real, and and then the last thing I'd like to say, Chairman, when this Community Fund was set up many, many, many years ago and we were all a bit suspicious of it, but the underlying thing is that members are at the heart of their community and can make sure that groups of people that officers don't know about receive funding to get themselves going and on their feet. This is very much a members' community fund to enable people who wouldn't otherwise be able to move on, to go somewhere and get things done. And a lot of the projects that I've supported in my division, I've seen them thrive and survive and thrive and grow to help an awful lot of people. And I could stand up here and talk for hours about it, but Chairman, I'll sit down.
Councillor Janet Eglund.
Thank you, Chairman. While I hope this committed this community funding that we get continues and goes on for many years, my my division, these people look forward to this, this sort of thing they can apply for, not for great lumps of money, like already been said, Chairman, but for small projects, the arts theatre that they run in one of my villages, the children that learn are learning the music from our volunteer teachers after hours, subscribing some money for them to encourage them and the children to work at being musicians in Staffordshire. I could go on and on about how many times over the years we, as a as the elected members of Staffordshire, have donated money to good causes and it brings us in touch with the people that we represent. And I value that very, very much. So I say to Victoria, long may it continue and may your officers carry on doing this good work because I appreciate it one hundred percent. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson, do you wish to respond to the debate?
Chairman, how could I not respond to all of those comments? Thank you so much.
Councillor Wilson, I will take that as a yes.
I think everyone in this room can honestly say that there's a project in their division that's really captured that what this is all about. And people have done it all differently, haven't they? Some people, as we've heard today, they've just put a tiny, tiny little amount in, some of them will put the whole the whole fund in for the year. But whatever really works for the community is what it's all about. One of the successes of last year's fund was that we were able to support communities with the Platinum Jubilee for for our dear Queen Elizabeth the Second. That was absolutely wonderful. I'm immensely proud that we were able to to help some of those celebratory events that took place. This year, for the King's Coronation, we we had ten, ten applications made retrospectively, things like, you know, cups for children and and gold coins and things like that. It's been absolutely wonderful. Last year, we allocated a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty three pounds and we supported a hundred and eighty different groups. And the total cost of the projects equated to nine hundred and thirty two thousand pounds. So the money that we put in has allowed events to happen that has come to a total cost of nine hundred and thirty two thousand pounds. And that's, that's absolutely incredible. And this year, we're going to do the same, hopefully. We've got some figures here. We've had seventy five applications so far. As I say, ten of those were related to coronation events. We've had a total so far of sixty eight, sixty eight, nearly sixty nine thousand pounds of funding requested and thirty three and a half thousand pounds allocated. We anticipate so far to have helped with events and different organised schemes of nearly three hundred and twenty one thousand pounds in total. So we're doing absolutely brilliant things. And you'll have heard me say in this chamber before that from little acorns, great oaks grow. We give them that tiny little amount of funding and with that they run with it. And years down the line, we see really well organised cohesive schemes and organisations and projects happening in this county. And I am very proud of this. There is still money left to allocate to everybody, so if you can get your groups to apply. And and I'm just very grateful to everybody for for sharing some of their projects in this report and and this morning, this afternoon in the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. I move the, I move the report be received. Is that agreed? Item ten on today's agenda, report of the chairman of the Staffordshire, Staffordshire Police Fire and Crime Panel. Councillor Peters, will you move consideration for the report, please? Councillor Gillian Pardaisy.
Thank you, Chair. One comment and one question, please. I'm assuming that the three fire crew plan is still being piloted. Whether it is or isn't, Chair, there's already alarm in the Staffordshire Fire and Rescue Service that this plan is being considered at all. Members will be aware that there've already been substantial cuts to the workforce over the past several years and Staffordshire Fire Service was placed in the requires improvement category in a number of areas in the latest HM inspection of twenty twenty two. And if members are not aware, a government report recommends the minimum safe standards for interventions at incidents be made up of at least four firefighters and that the standard operating procedures are designed to minimise risk to firefighters. My question now, Chair.
You had a question, I presume that's within the report?
Yeah.
I presume that's about the report.
Yes. We're told that economic factors have also had an impact on delivery, Chair. If I could please ask what is meant by economic factors?
I don't want to speak. I don't know why.
When your name came up, councillor Mon, I was a little surprised, but your name did appear on the screen. Councillor Bob Spencer.
Chair, thank you very much. I I very much welcome this this report, particular particularly the what seems like the renewed emphasis around road safety. I do think sometimes that that is a neglected area of policing, particularly when other perceived more or sort of greater priorities come along. And I'm sure that all members will have been plagued with reports of speeding and and various other antisocial driving. So I very much welcome that. I also welcome the bottom two points that on page one hundred and twenty three, the issue about building public confidence in one O one, I do think that's long overdue. And also the need for the public to see databases. I also think that will be incredibly helpful. If members are sitting waiting for that to arrive, you might sit for some time. And I've I've mentioned this several times before, there are publicly accessible websites that will provide far better data to will provide far better data to you, and I'm more than happy to share that and show people how to do it. The point I wanted to raise is point two on 122. I think that's something of a coded reference, isn't it, to this national move where we, or the police in particular, are now looking at how they respond to various forms of mental illness. I do think that we need to get that right. That has some real dangers associated with it. And I know that those police forces, together with local authorities, are looking very carefully at that. And just to reassure members that this is one of the issues that is now on the Safeguarding, Overview and Scrutiny Committee as we move forward, just to make sure that people in Staffordshire who might present with a mental illness at two o'clock in the morning, or wherever it is, do receive the best and the most appropriate care. Thank you.
councillor Paul Snape.
Thank you, Chair. I know a point of order was called and what councillor Pardaisi said, but she said that Staffordshire Fire was in need of improvement, and I can't allow that to go uncontested. The offset report last year said fire service in Staffordshire was good. So once again, we've had fake news off councillor Pardaisi.
councillor Ian Parry.
This is legacy stuff. When I call for the...
Further speakers on this item. councillor Peters, do you wish to respond to the debate?
Councillor Pardaisi could just point out to me, I'm struggling to find out where the mention of economic factors appears in the report, so apologies for that.
Can we find it?
Yeah, I can see it. Yep. To respond to that specific point, because we didn't pursue it in any detail exactly what the meaning was all about in that context. But I'm happy to get back. I'll seek clarification from the PCC and get some context around that. Can I just say, Mr Chairman, that I'm grateful to Mr Spencer for his reassurance on the front of the police activities. We all acknowledge his vast experience, and any comments he chooses to make are of great benefit to me. And I think the close working relationship that Safeguarding have with my panel can only do a lot of benefit for the county council and the community of Staffordshire.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Peters. I move the report be received. Is that agreed? Moving on to item 11, which is questions, understanding order eight. Members, the four questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the questions and answers will be taken as read. I will allow each question of five minutes to which to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. No debate is allowed. councillor Yates to councillor Wilson. Councillor Yates, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, thank you very much. And just to put the question which I, it was answered by councillor Williams, and in some respects, that shows the confusion which we are having as town, district and county councillors on who is responsible for the actual maintenance, whether it be routine or emergency maintenance, because things which go on. Just to put things into context, this particular cycle route is called locally the Biddle Valley Way, but I don't want it considered as something which is broken and special to Biddle. This is surely part of our sustainable transport network, and as such encourages people to move away from the use of cars and the use of cycles, especially when the context of...
There is a question there, so we're not taking it.
There is a question, but it takes five minutes. I've got five minutes, and I like to put the context, because it's fundamentally important.
Excuse me, members. Members, thank you very much. If I think you're going to get to a question, that's fine.
I'm definitely going to get to a question.
But make clear that the rule says that there is no debate, so...
Yes, I'm not having a debate. I'm just putting the... I did say I'd want to put the context.
The context, that's fine. And I would ask members to...
Context is, is this route as part of our sustainable cycling network, we're having difficulty establishing new cycling networks, so it's very important that we maintain the ones we got. It connects South Cheshire to Regent's Park in London without having to use a highway or a road by connecting to the local canal network through Stoke-on-Trent. People are starting to use this to commute to work, both in South Cheshire and Stoke-on-Trent, using electric cycles. It needs maintaining.
Members, if you can just give me a second. Members, the councillor said he was going to put some context in, context of where the path goes to and where it goes from, ease context, and I'm going to take that. I would ask members to respect that, I'm sure councillor Yates will come to his question, but as soon as you can, please, councillor Yates.
Thank you, Chair. And I can assure you, I will come to my question within the green light. Sorry. So, since the contract was surrendered by Staffordshire Morning District Council, no routine maintenance has happened. At this moment in time, it is very difficult to see how this national cycle route can be used for commuting and therefore doesn't contribute to the sustainable transport. So the question is... Thank you. Can I have a named officer who has the authority to award a contract to a body that is prepared to work with the community to maintain and improve this national cycle network, so we can get on and get the maintenance which it deserves? Thank you.
councillor Wilson.
Just to confirm, as it's highways, yes, it's me, not councillor Wilson, so maybe councillor Yates needs to direct his question to the appropriate member at the start. As you can see, it says quite clearly in there that we have continued to arrange repairs where required. But I will ensure that councillor Yates can get hold of an officer's name where he can liaise with that, but remembering that this is one of many cycle routes and many areas that we look at throughout the county, and we are doing the best that we can to be able to do so. So, yes, I will make sure he gets a name, but I hope that will clarify and clear any of his confusions.
The next question I have is councillor Afzal to councillor David Williams. As councillor Afzal isn't here, we'll move on to councillor Charlotte Atkins, to councillor Price. Again, councillor Price is not in today, so if you want to give a supplementary question, I'm sure we can arrange for you to receive an answer.
Yes, I appreciate that councillor Price is not here, but I really wanted, first of all, to thank him for the reassuring response, but the question did ask where there were particular areas of the county where attendance is particularly poor or good. That is not covered in the answer. Because my concern is that however many children are not in school, that we don't want them out of sight and out of mind, because there could be a number of issues. One, that they're not getting an adequate education, or that they're not safe and well. And whichever that reason is, or indeed, they may be very well home-schooled, but as a county council, we should be concerned about their welfare, whether it be educational standards or whether it be other issues. So what I want to establish is that we have a means of checking up that those children are safe and well, because otherwise, given what's been happening nationally, and it appears that it's not happening quite so much in Staffordshire, that we should be concerned where we don't have sight of those children.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm able to deliver a holding response on behalf of councillor Price, who, as you know, is unwell today and can't be with us. It is an issue that we are examining through the Children's Improvement Board in some detail. The concerns that you've expressed are the concerns that we feel as well. It is concerning that children are being off-rolled from schools under the guise of elective home education. And I have myself, on a number of occasions in my place of work, encountered 13-year-old, 14-year-old boys in particular in the afternoon, who I've challenged them, said, why are you not in school? To which they've responded, oh, we're being home-educated. And I've said to them, oh, really, lads? So you're here at two o'clock in the afternoon chucking rocks across the road? So it is a really, really important point that you raise, and it's something, as I say, that the Children's Improvement Board is looking to in some detail. We will be awaiting the returns from the schools in the new term to clarify precisely what the situation looks like. And we will continue to press government ministers for a route through to ensuring that children who are at home are safe and well and are getting the appropriate level of education. Thank you for your supplementary question.
And the final one today is councillor Pardaisi to councillor Sutton.
Thank you, Chair. My question was about the forthcoming extension of 30 hours free childcare and whether we were equipped to meet that requirement. And I'm told in the answer that we're working at pace to ensure as many families as possible in Staffordshire will benefit. As many families as possible. Do we take it then, Chair, that there will be some families, irrespective of whether they need it or want it, will be denied a 30-hour free place?
councillor Sutton.
The provision of childcare within the county, within the country, is not a responsibility of local authorities. It is provided by many, many private providers. Our responsibility, which our team do really well behind the scenes most of the time, is work with those providers to ensure that we have sufficiency of supply. So it is almost impossible for us to be able to say going forward whether we will or won't be able to meet any sufficiency that comes forward. But up until now, we've been able to do that particularly well in this county, and we have not seen anywhere near the level of closures of private providers that has been seen across the country. We haven't had that in Staffordshire. So that gives me good confidence that the team will be able to work well, so that we carry out and are able to fulfil our statutory duty.
Thank you. We may now move on to item 12 on today's agenda, which is petitions. Does any member have petition they wish to present? councillor Nigel Yates.
Just patience, please, patience. Right, if you please, yes, I have got a petition which I'd like to present. It's a petition to hopefully stop the imposition of parking charges at Greenway Bank Country Park. Again, just putting it into context, Greenway Bank Country Park is just on the outsides of Biddle Town, between Biddle and Brown Edge, which is my fellow councillor division, councillor Flunder. It is slightly outside of walking distance, so unfortunately, at this moment in time, there's no other real sensible route to get there other than parking. Greenway Bank Country Park is used and cherished by the local community as a place for exercise and relaxation. Introducing car parking charges will limit the attendance of local residents and cause parking congestion on surrounding roads. Again, it's stressed that Greenway Park is not canic-chased, and as such, it doesn't suffer the same pressures from tourism. Parking charges will therefore have a disproportionate and detrimental effect on Biddle residents and the surrounding areas. The surrounding areas, Brown Edge will be in and in Brown Edge. Health and wellbeing is fundamentally important and unfettered access to country parks such as Greenway Bank gives a measurable benefits to the local community. I will add that I do think there's more thought out, I wouldn't go so far as saying it tells me, but different opportunities to creating income from places like Greenway Bank Country Park, which would be supported by the local community. And I would like the opportunity, as a divisional councillor, as I'm sure my colleague would as well, to actually discuss what options there are, to raise necessary funds required to do the ongoing maintenance. And the one thing I will add, because I do like my locality, I haven't stapled together, I've tidied together a piece of ribbon, a piece of ribbon which was made in Biddle. So that's my little gift as I hand over that petition. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
councillor Jean Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. On behalf of Brockton Parish Council and the communities of Milford, Barckswich, Ticksall and parts of Basish and Weeping Cross, I'd like to present a petition on the crossroads at Brockton that intersects the A34. It is a slightly staggered junction where Sawpit Lane, which leads to Brockton, Milford and Haywoods, and the Teddlesley Road, which leads to the M6, Pancras and Wolverhampton, join the A34. Recent housing developments in the Haywoods and Basish area of Stafford have significantly increased the traffic flow in this area. There are frequent accidents there, a lot not reported because of the minor bumps. I went down there two days ago, and there's the front of a transit van dumped on the verge. So, and that wouldn't be reported, it wasn't reported to the police. A fatality occurred in 2010 when a motorcyclist, a Staffordshire County Council employee, by the way, was in collision with a car. Last year, when it was announced that Staffordshire County Council had secured funding for improving the A34 corridor, the parish council and residents hoped that some of the money will be spent improving the crossroads. That was not to be. Following a residents' meeting, it was decided to raise a petition to make Staffordshire County Council aware of the feeling of the residents. It has not in common for Brockton residents need to travel to Stafford to either go round via Milford or go the crossroads on the Chetwyne Arms and turn back because of the danger when turning. The parish council and the undersigned on the petition, 418 signatures, 10 emails and six photos, call on Staffordshire Council to improve the junctions of Sawpit Lane and Teddlesley Road on the A34, Staffordshire Canick Road, Brockton Crossroads, with the installation of traffic lights. Thank you, Chairman.
Perfect timing, councillor Francis. We now move on to item 13, which is exclusions to the public. We have no exclusions to the public, so that is the end of the meeting. Can I wish all members a lovely afternoon and forthcoming weekend? Thank you.